You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
All right. Good evening. My name is Peter Basserman, and I'm chairman of the Branford Inland Wetland Commission. It is now a little past 6 o'clock. I will now open the special meeting of this commission on April 23, 2020. This meeting will be conducted as a virtual meeting using the Zoom software conferencing platform instead of the normal in-person format. It's being held in accordance with Connecticut's Executive Order 7B. The documents referred to the meeting tonight are available at the Town Hall or via the agency's webpage. As a special meeting, there are no changes to the agenda which was posted. I guess at this point, I'll ask Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland agent, for any supplemental remarks that you would like to share with tonight's participants regarding Executive Order 7B or your role as the host of this conference call or details associated with the Zoom application that we should all be aware of. Jamie?
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland agent. So just to remind everyone, per Executive Order 7B, everyone needs to state their name and title prior to each time they speak so that everyone knows who is talking. Just a quick reminder on Zoom. And for those that are new, in the lower left corner, there's either a microphone or speaker button that lets you mute and unmute your line. If you're accessing by phone, you can mute and unmute by pressing star 6. Please wait for chairman to open for public comment if you're looking to provide public comment. Camcorder buttons next to the microphone button, which lets you turn on and off your video. If you would like to raise your hand virtually for the chairman's attention, you can do so by clicking on the participant button and clicking the three-dot button in the lower right-hand corner, which will let you see the raise hand feature. You can raise your hand via phone by pressing star 9. And you can switch between views, speaker and gallery views in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. They ask that you only use the chat feature if you're having technical difficulties or difficulty indicating that you have a question or comment. And I think that summarizes it.
One other thing. David, you're going to keep me honest regarding the raise your hand. Just if I fail to get somebody's attention or get my attention.
100%, Peter. This is David McCarthy speaking. I'll do that as well as monitor the chat in case anyone decides to use it.
Thank you. I'll now take a roll call of the commission. When I announce your name, please reply with present. Commissioner Begum.
Present.
Commissioner Boda.
Present.
Commissioner Granach. Commissioner Kraus. Commissioner Rose.
Present.
Mr. Gore.
Present.
Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Sullivan.
Present.
Thank you. Okay. Per regulations, let's see, seven commissioners may vote on an issue. Is there any commissioner present that needs to recuse themselves from tonight's discussion and deliberation?
Larry Spagaman, need to recuse myself.
Okay. Now, we have therefore 1, 2, 3, 4 commissioners that are available to vote, and therefore, we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Each vote by a commissioner, by the way, is independent and of equal weight. Let's see. Next on the special meeting agenda are the deliberations. Deliberations for Inland Wetland 191002, 779803 East Main Street and 21 Sycamore Way Laboratory Building. It was determined on November 14, 2019, at a meeting of the commission that a public hearing was required for Inland Wetland 191101. And established January 9, 2020 for that purpose. In addition, the commission decided additional expertise was required to fully evaluate the applicant's plans. At a special meeting on December 4, 2019, the commission reviewed responses to its RFP and decided to engage Cottis Pody Associates. The hearing was opened on January 9. It continued February 13 and concluded on March 12, 2020. Sitewalk was held on January 18, 2020. We began deliberations on that application on 4/9, and we are continuing those deliberations this evening. I hope we can conclude deliberations this evening, in which case, Inland Wetland staff would consolidate those discussions into a document that we would review at a subsequent meeting. We'd have to decide tonight whether to have another special meeting or wait until the next regular meeting. If we do not come to conclusion tonight, then we will need to ask the applicant for a extension. Let's see. At that point, I think the document that we should have all received that is pertinent to the discussions this evening are the minutes from the April 9 meeting as well as a staff-prepared document trying to bring out some of the discussion that we had on April 9. And specific as well were the boilerplate kinds of items. I think that was a three-page. We still have 58 exhibits, Jamie.
Sounds right. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Okay. So obviously, nothing added since the public hearing closed and all that. Okay. I guess the first item on the document that staff sent out, well, before I make those... Any comments from the commission at this point? Any questions or issues on the document that was sent out that you want to refer to staff? Okay. The first item, in fact, maybe the best thing to do at this point, Jamie, since you prepared the document, was just why don't we go down through those 10, 9 items on that document?
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland agent. So in response to the deliberations from the last meeting, kind of drafted up some language based off some of the discussion that was had and also just based off of staff review of the application. So the first couple are really kind of based off of the discussion. With the first one being about inspections, there was some discussion about... Basically, my interpretation was that the commission wanted staff to take the initiative to modify the inspection language to fit the application. So that's what that language there is intended to reflect. I guess let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, I will keep going. Number two was based off of the discussion regarding what would happen if water course 1 were to become dewatered. There was some discussion regarding possibly requiring some monitoring to basically document, I guess, whether or not that was or was not an issue. So I took a stab at just providing some basic language to get conversation going there kind of as a placeholder, and you guys can decide if you want to elaborate on that or not. Number three was looking to clarify the comment regarding the erosion control or the dewatering process. Shouldn't need to... Should the wetland creation area need to be dewatered? On the erosion control page, they said that they were going to use dewatering bags, and that wasn't clear on the landscaping page, which was the page that had all the mitigation on it. So the suggestion is that the commission can consider adding a condition that would basically identify that the dewatering bags would be preferred because that would be less disturbance than creating a temporary sediment trap in that should site conditions require modification, that they would need to be approved by the wetland scientist and the licensed environmental professional. Number four was some modification to the standard bond language based off of recent discussions that have happened with the commission and also some... So the main point was to look at modifying the language to reflect the extension of the monitoring period if needed. And so I did have Town Council take a quick look at this, and they provided a little bit of comment in that this is the language that we currently have. And just for reference, I put the wetland monitoring notes that were on sheet LL1 for quick reference.
Just to be... Peter Basserman, Commissioner. Just to be clear, Jamie, when you say Town Council reviewed this, this is existing language that's on this document, and this is what council reviewed and said this was okay?
So Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland agent. I did send this over to Town Council for a quick look just to make sure that... That condition in particular, I had expressed that I would talk with Town Council about it. So I wanted to have his feedback so that the commission could discuss that at this meeting. I still recommend that the commission, if you feel like you're pretty comfortable in which way you want to go, you have staff draft up a document for you to review at a later meeting based on, you know, the outcome of your deliberations.
Basserman again, Commissioner. Just again, to be clear, then there was nothing added by council at this point?
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland agent. So this was based off of standard language. Sorry, I kind of missed that part of your question. It was based off of a boilerplate condition and based off of some comments, I think largely by Commissioner Rose, about the clarity, the amount of commas, you know, possibly losing some some of the points or intent of the condition. I did kind of restructure it. I also made the language a little bit regarding the five years or however... For five years or the life of the permit, whichever occurs first. So I don't know if that's exactly what you guys were intending, but that's the... The last sentence is particularly what I was working with Town Council on.
Thank you. Item 5.
Item 5, this kind of moves away from what the discussion was at the last meeting, and these are conditions that I've seen the commission apply in the past for projects of this scale. So condition 5 basically requires the applicant to work with their surveyor to make sure everything is field-located appropriately and submitting and as-built to confirm construction is compliant with the plans at the end of construction. Also certification for the final cleaning of the stormwater system after completion of construction to make sure that it's good to go. And wetland notification to be recorded on the land records. This is the same language that was... This is based off a boilerplate condition, but was modified for the last large application the commission approved, and it's the same language from that application. Number 6. I don't know that it's necessary, but the applicant... The phasing is that the mitigation will occur first, and that's what the applicant has put forth. But if you wanted to make it a condition so it was extremely clear, you could consider doing that. Number 7. This is another pretty standard condition that gets applied to applications of this scale. Basically, allowing for a little bit of flexibility in the planting as needed with just notifying the commission through email and having that modification made by the wetland scientist to make sure that the modifications are appropriate. And that's also embedded in the plans, and that's what that tiny language is below that. Number 8. This is another standard condition that usually gets applied and also is kind of incorporated in their notes on EC6. That's again, the box is copied below. The only thing that this condition really does is clarifies that or requires that those reports be submitted to the agency so that staff can... To aid in staff's review of compliance with the permit. And then number 9. I know there was a little bit of discussion about this during the public hearing, and I didn't have an opportunity to double-check the specifics, but in the past, the commission has required rock processing equipment shall be located outside the 100-foot upwind review area. As I recall, there was some discussion regarding the fact that, you know, water course 1 is above all the activity. And could you have it within 100 feet of that water course? I think that was part of the discussion, and I don't know what the outcome was. So I guess I just put that there as a placeholder reminder to see what you guys wanted to do with that.
Okay. Commissioner Basserman. So is there any of the items identified by staff that any of the commissioners have issue with or would suggest changes to those conditions? Hearing none. Do we need to revisit 10.2 in order to remember? We're trying to ultimately get enough material on the record so that staff can prepare a document that we would then approve.
So this is Commissioner Boda. I think that if there was a motion or when there is a motion for this application, should the motion be made to approve the application, then the motion needs to include language specifying about how the agency found that there was not a feasible improvement alternative based upon the record and further as to why the commission would approve fill in the wetland. I think that that's important not only for the regulations but for our kind of historical practice of aiming for fair and uniform application of the rules and regulations.
I guess I agree, and I'm not sure at this point that we've done that. So maybe we need to revisit 10.2 and make sure that we can elucidate the conditions that we find appropriate. I know we did this the last time on a step-by-step basis.
Yeah. It may be... Sorry, this is Commissioner Boda. It may be helpful to pull from the minutes and as opposed to kind of relitigating all of 10.2. I think what I would like to avoid is just a straight motion where someone says, "I make a motion that we do this, and here are the conditions." But we don't really get into the kind of little bit of the background as to why. Because I think in the instances where there's a significant impact, then I think that we're obligated to be very clear.
So with that, Commissioner Basserman, with that on the table, why don't we take a moment and collect those minutes in front of us so that we can kind of review that in a maybe more concentrated and focused manner?
Commissioner Rose, you're referring to the April 9 minutes, correct?
Correct.
And those minutes are prepared section by section of 10.2?
Right again. So the the first thing that I see on 10.2A was the area of the puddle on a rock.
I love that section.
Yeah. And I guess do we... Do we need any further discussion of that whole notion of puddle on a rock?
This is Commissioner Rose. No, Commissioner Boda, you know, appropriately reminded me that, you know, we're... My language, in a sense, wasn't appropriate in that characterizing one water course or one wetland as important or unimportant isn't consistent with the statute. And I wasn't meaning to denigrate it as a water course, but I do think my other comments about how that water course fits into their overall plan and the mitigation they propose, I stand by my comments and my belief that the proposal is good is well-formatted the way that they presented it.
Commissioner Basserman, do we think that in the discussion of 10.2A that there really is not another area as suitable as what the applicant has planned regarding the mitigation area? The location of the mitigation area?
Can you repeat that, Peter? Commissioner Basserman, sorry.
Does anybody feel that the applicant chose... Let me rephrase that. Does anyone feel that the applicant chose the correct spot for the mitigation area and that there are no other better areas for mitigation?
This is Commissioner Rose. I believe, I believe based on the evidence that they offered and the overall site plan that they have chosen the single best place for mitigation. And I think its purposes are... Were made clear and will ultimately be beneficial.
This is Commissioner Boda. The mitigation, I think, that they're offering is the... Is an appropriate mitigation for what they're seeking to do. I think the one issue that I continue to grapple with is the analysis that the filling is... They're only prudent and feasible. That alternative where they don't fill that rock piece. I don't... I don't know that that... That the concern about where the bank is best located. I don't know that that really rises to the level of not feasible. It's not necessarily what they want, but I don't think that that rises to the level of not feasible because there is something that they can put there for sure. So but that being said, I think that to answer Chairman Basserman's question, I think that the... What they're offering as the mitigation, I don't object to that.
Does anybody feel differently? So have we sufficiently addressed 10.2A?
This is Commissioner Rose. Are we going to use nodding as a as a way of responding? Or would you like something better?
I think vocal is probably what's required, but I'm guessing on that, but...
I'm satisfied with that section, the discussion of that section. Commissioner Rose?
Commissioner Boda?
I think that I'm, like I said, I'm satisfied with the discussion. I don't think that we're going to determine anything else that we haven't already determined from the last meeting and discussion. I, like I said, my biggest concern is I can't seem to... I cannot get past the idea that this... That what they've offered is the only feasible and prudent alternative. And I... It just doesn't... It doesn't hold this... Particularly when I think about the other instances where we've said, "Okay, yes, there is no prudent and feasible alternative." This doesn't quite rise to that for me. And so that's the... That is the... Everything else, I don't have an issue with the remainder of the application and the remainder of the discussions that we've had. That's a real... That's a sticking point for me.
Commissioner Basserman. The other issue, Commissioner Boda, is I'm not sure on the record, you know, through the public hearing process, et cetera, that there's any substantial evidence that makes that feasible and prudent argument different than what we keep coming back to. So I understand the dilemma of past prudent and feasible and prudent and comparisons and all that, but to me, at this point, it's a little bit of a stretch given what was presented on the record.
This is Commissioner Rose. What was a stretch, Commissioner Basserman?
To the extent that we would now look at a feasible and prudent alternative that was clearly not considered during the public hearing.
Fair enough.
Yeah. This is Commissioner Boda. I mean, there's nothing else that can be introduced to the record. So I agree with that statement.
Is there, given Commissioner Bassman, given Commissioner Boda's statement that this is the one kind of sticking point in her mind, and the other aspects of the application seem to be okay, are there other areas that any other commissioner has regarding this application in the context of 10.2 that we need to visit?
This is Commissioner Rose. Chairman Basserman, looking at the minutes, the discussion is documented in the minutes, but it doesn't recite the actual language of the regulation. If you could do that, it might help. I keep looking at the minutes and seeing everything we talked about, but I'm not reminded of the exact language of that sentence.
Okay. Commissioner Bassman, let me get that. 10.2B is the applicant's purpose for comma and any feasible improvement alternatives to comma the proposed... the proposed regulated activity which alternatives would cause, cause less or no environmental impacts to wetlands or water courses. So, you know, I, I think we had a long discussion of this, but I if the minutes reflect, and I think it does accurately what we discussed, I don't think we came up with anything that would have less of an environmental impact in the prior discussion.
This is Commissioner Rose. So just put a little meat on the bones of that. I think there whether or not we reached a point of enough discussion, I guess is subjective, but we, we did discuss asking them to look at relocating the building to behind the grocery store, the, the bank as opposed to next to it along Main Street and, and I think, not to start a firestorm here, but I think, I, I made the distinction, and I, I don't recall if it was considered an incorrect distinction, that the reasonable, appropriate reasonable alternatives, prudent and reasonable alternatives to me didn't mean to suggest to them or to inquire of them a prudent and reasonable alternative development program. It, it asks us to consider prudent and reasonable alternatives to their regulated activities. While one sort of inextricably bound with the other, the focus, our focus is on their activity, their proposed activities and what might be prudent and reasonable alternative to that. Not their proposed size of buildings, location of those buildings and what tenants they put in them as a discussion amongst us of what would be prudent and reasonable alternatives to their development plan. And I think they have put forth a reasonable development plan, but that's their judgment and that's their risk. And the statute does provide for what they are the consequences of what they're designing is to affect the water course one and to do it through an offsetting means provided in the statute, which given the, the overall contribution of the project, it, I think is a it is the best plan as they proposed, short of asking them to propose some other development plan. And they've made it quite clear that some other development plan that might provide an alternative to their proposed regulated activity isn't, in their opinion, in the best interest of the development. And so I think where we were and the, the discussion was where I was anyway, is that their first plan with the buildings next to each other on Main Street makes sense. That the consequence would be to touch water course one and to provide mitigation in the rear of the property. And so I, that, that's my recollection of the discussion about prudent and reasonable alternatives and just reciting what I recall in the interest of just being accurate.
Commissioner Basserman, yeah, did, did we not really have a discussion about the nature of the occupant of that building? And where do you draw the line on prudent and feasible alternative? In other words, we could talk about the location of that building as it affects wetland and whether there are better alternatives to the placement of that footprint. But it would be maybe beyond a bridge too far to the extent that we said a feasible improvement alternative would be to change who goes in that building, therefore you can locate it differently. Wasn't that kind of the nature of where we wound up on the building and the tenant?
Yeah, the, it was literally what would another kind of tenant in that building in the rear make that more possible? We did talk about that. I think, again, they're, they're bound to each other in this discussion, but we, we were talking about the physical location of that building and in this context, how their proposed tenant would be affected by that additional. So it was two sides of the same coin. So.
And I guess the question is, our Commissioner Bassman, I guess the question is, is that, is both of that within our purview? Or are we essentially restricted to, this is the applicant's development plan. This is the type of tenant that is part of that development plan that dictates a building of certain size and location, and that's what we're essentially evaluating? Not, not who's the best possible tenant to go in there from a wetland standpoint?
This is Commissioner Rose. So I would defer to you and Commissioner Boda, both who I know are far more experienced and informed than I am on the regulation history of other applications in Branford. But I, I don't mean to suggest that we're limited. I certainly was arguing the idea that seeking prudent and reasonable alternatives, in my view, based on what I know and think, is not to argue about a better development plan, which relates to their buildings, how big they are, where they sit and what tenants they put in them. To that degree, they've made their proposal. It's putting those two buildings next to each other on Main Street. They don't like the idea of an alternative arrangement of buildings or tenants. That's their deal. And so they put forth the plan with the two buildings next to each other. In that context, I think we are limited to looking at their plan and their resulting regulated activities and deciding whether those regulated activities are acceptable, consistent with the statute. And whether there's any prudent and reasonable alternatives to those regulated activities. I don't think there are. I think their plan is the best with respect to the regulated activities. And, and so that's how I parse those pieces.
Commissioner Bassman, I don't, I don't disagree, Commissioner Rose.
So I think, oh, sorry, Commissioner Boda. So I, I think that where I, I would where my thinking diverges from the description that you've just laid out is that the commission looks, needs to look at the application in a very neutral sense with respect to, unless there's a direct impact with what's going on or, or in the property, right? And so it is, it is a parcel. And that parcel can be used within the zoning regulations for any, any number of things. And so an applicant can ask for something that is acceptable within the zoning regulations, right? But perhaps is too far with the wetland regulations. And so maybe they could build out 80%, right? But there are such wetlands on the property that that would, that would really foreclose down on 10.2. And so, you know, we look at them and say, well, you can't, that's really not something that you can do within the boundaries of our regulations, but here, you know, look at this space instead. And that they, they can do something, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the one and only thing that they've said, this is what we insist upon doing and therefore it is the only thing that we can do. And then therefore there is no other prudent and feasible alternative because it is what we want. And therefore it must be prudent and feasible. So I, I think that that is not the purpose of the wetland regulations 20, 22A-36, right? Through 22A-45. So I, I do not anticipate changing everybody's mind. I, I'm really I think this, this is the, the kind of discussion that is important. We've talked a little bit about this just to I don't know how you have deliberations before you close the public hearing, but I, but I think that these are the kind of discussions that we need to dig into more deeply before we close the public hearing so that we can continue to get some guidance. Better guidance, both from the applicant themselves as well as from our own peer reviewer and or counsel. Because I, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of the guidance that has come out from deep, which I can't reference here because it's not part of the public hearing, but I, this doesn't jive with my understanding of prudent and feasible alternatives. It just doesn't match. So I, I feel a little bit hamstrung in terms of the arguments that we, that are and are not available to me as they are or are not part of the public hearing.
Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, what was Co Despoty's comment on this building location? If I'm not mistaken, Co Despoty, when all was said and done, felt that this was the best location on the property for that additional building. Am I incorrect on that or am I right?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily trying not to put words in anyone's mouth. Um, I, I know that there was, they reviewed the alternatives and their initial comment was along the lines of an alternative tenant could perhaps, you know, make this location more appropriate. And then there was some discussion that they presented at the public hearing regarding that. And, and they said, it's really up to the commission to decide whether or not they agree with the applicant that this is not prudent. And they really kind of left it open to the commission, which is, is the appropriate thing to do because it is the commission's decision. And then there was some more discussion regarding the alternative at the last public hearing. There was a brief overview of all of the alternatives there as well. And
Commissioner Bassman, that, that's the part that I try to remember. The last day of the public hearing where we went through, was it four alternatives, I, I think? And, and the one that the one that they, they went with is, is the one that seemed to be most prudent and feasible.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. I think the peer reviewers' largest concern at that last meeting was regarding the building location relative to where the contaminants were. In the sense that, and how that played out with where the parking lot was and where the infiltration system was. The applicant revised their application materials to over excavate the contain, remove all the contaminated soils from around the infiltration system, which that satisfied the peer reviewers' concerns regarding putting the the stormwater system where it was. So I, I think at the last meeting, the peer reviewer comments regarding building locations really had to do with the grocery store pad. And I I don't recall there being much discussion from the peer reviewer, if any, regarding the bank location.
Thank you.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. If you guys would like, I can read the definition of prudent from the regulations if you think that would help.
Why don't we do that?
Prudent means economically and otherwise reasonable in light of the social benefits derived from the proposed regulated activity, provided cost may be considered in deciding what is prudent and further provided a mere showing of expense will not necessarily mean an alternative is imprudent. Sorry, Philip. Odd emphasis.
Yeah, Commissioner Bassman, based on that definition, you know, I, I don't know that I could figure out what the economic side of that equation is. And I, I don't know that we had evidence of that within the context of the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Rose. You know, I think it's easy again to hear those words and think that we're being asked to assess the development program as opposed to the wetland activities, the regulated activities that are being imposed in the context of their development program. Economics, in my opinion, just on the face of the language you just repeated, which I, I've done quite a bit of reading in the last few weeks, just because of my having difficulty with a number of issues on the project, trying to understand what's important, what isn't statutorily and looking at some case law. And the economics being referred to aren't the economics of the development project. They're the economics of the regulated activities. And a prudent reasonable alternative of a lesser expensive regulated activity to them isn't our problem. But it, that language and the intent of that language isn't to discuss or to provide jurisdiction over the economics of their development program, which includes building sizes, locations, tenants, uses, et cetera. So I, I, I guess I, I am trying to be clear in certainly what I am arguing, but also what I think is accurate, that the the regulated activities that they proposed, they have not shown what would be a prudent and reasonable alternative to those that are better than what they proposed in the development plan that they prefer. That's, I think, is the question before us. And I think that they have demonstrated that the, the development plan that they want requires regulated activities that in the grand scheme of things is the most prudent and reasonable alternative. And that's where I come out. And I, I do believe that's where the statute intends for us to have our discussion, which we're having. But I don't think it extends to the economics of the development project.
Commissioner Bassman, fair point, Commissioner Rose. Are we, are we ready to move on from 10.2B or do we still have to grapple with this?
I don't think there's anything new, Commissioner Boda, I don't think there's anything new to grapple over.
That being, Commissioner Bassman, that being said, 10.2C, which is a relationship between the short term and the long term impacts of the proposed development. I guess we're only talking, Commissioner Bassman, I guess the only thing that we really talked about this in the last discussion was you know, plant survivor survivability and water quality and things like that. Stormwater report, I think some of the items that the staff prepared in the document they sent out for this meeting. prepared, uh, in the document they sent out for this meeting, you know, touched on, um, sharing the information, uh, timeframes associated with that, who would be involved, um, and therefore I, I, I think that the, the notes from my standpoint that were covered by staff in the discussion that, uh, uh, Jamie had, uh, at the beginning of this meeting, uh, to me addressed the short and long term issues that we discussed the last meeting. But I'm certainly open to any further discussion that commissioners want to, um, bring up about this item. That being said, 10.2D. Uh, 10.2D is irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetlands or watercourses. We had a fair amount of discussion on this the last time. I think the minutes reflect that. Again, this is Commissioner Bassman, we had some concerns about blasting and, uh, pond draining and de-watering and, and that kind of stuff, um. As, as you have reviewed, uh, the minutes and the document that, um, staff sent out, uh, are there any further issues on, uh, the de-watering a- aspect of this application? For me, uh, Commissioner Bassman, for me, uh, staff captured, I think, the concern um, and, and therefore in the document that was sent out, and I think specifically item. Was it four? It was item five. I think the, um, captured, captured well, um, the concern and therefore the involvement of staff and the length of the reports that proved to, uh, happen, uh, regarding this potential de-watering. Is there anything that you would want to add, uh, Jamie, at this point regarding, um, the de-watering concern?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um. I guess the one thing I would request clarification on is in the proposed language, um, I had kind of a two-sentence condition. Um, the contractor is to notify the inland wetland agency when blasting work associated with water course one impacts will start and has been completed. Um, and then I have the wetland creation reports shall also address status of the remaining portion of water course one to ensure compliance with the permit. Just wanted to make sure that that captures, um, the discussion that was at the last meeting, or if, if there's a different way you want to handle that. Are you looking to just have one report or do you want that monitoring to happen over the same timeframe that the wetland creation mitigation would be occurring?
I, I don't know, Commissioner Bassman, I don't know about anybody else, but I, I think the latter is appropriate. Anybody, any commissioner feel differently? Okay.
Commissioner Boda, no.
Commissioner Rose, no.
Uh, I guess at this point, uh, Jamie, for the items that we've covered, is it clear uh, what the decisions are regarding 10.2 to be captured in a document that staff can prepare?
Um, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. I think the item that might be outstanding is uh, 10.2B, which is the alternatives, um. It seems like the commission's a little bit split on that. Um, so we would need guidance as to, uh, which direction you wanted to go. And it would be nice to have a couple of summarizing points on, on that side, um, you know, like not, not, not to go over the whole discussion again, but if, if there's a couple of highlighting points that you would really want to make sure ended up in the document, it'd be useful to.
That, that hour and a half of transcript we have isn't sufficient.
We can go back and take a look at it, um, but we would definitely need to know which way you guys are, are leaning before.
Commissioner Bassman, I, I, I think we, um, we can't put Jamie in a spot of interpreting the commission. I, 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 that's dangerous, um, for, for all of us. So to Jamie's point, we need to be clear in, in terms of the, the message that, uh, we come up with so that staff can capture that. We don't want staff to create that.
No, Commissioner Boda, I was not, I was not being.
And, and I wasn't pointing fingers. I was just saying, I think for everyone's benefit, um, it can't be staff, it's got to be us.
Correct.
Commissioner Rose, um, wouldn't the, our motion uh, that we vote on give the clarification or the clarity to staff that we're talking about?
Commissioner Boda, I, I think that, um, and Chairman Bassman and, and Jamie, please correct me if I'm speaking out of turn. I, I think that, um, what is being sought now is the language that ultimately can be used to make a motion that would legally require, have all of the components that it needs in order to satisfy the criteria for a decision set out in 10.2.
Uh, Commissioner Bassman, that's spot on.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agents. So given the uh, how large this application is in, in respect to, um, wetland review, basically what the commission would be hopefully doing now or at some point is kind of, um, putting forth what they would see their motion possibly being, um, and then we would draft it up based off of your, your discussion now, and then bring it back for you to review, review and confirm if that's what you want after, you know, typing it all up and, um, having town council review it. So right now we're kind of asking you to say if you kind of pre-draft a motion rather than actually make a motion. If that makes any sense.
Sure, yeah, I, Commissioner Rose, that, I was trying to say the same thing, that um, al- although I get this need for the steps, if we can try to articulate what the motion might look like, um, which is to essentially assimilate, um, or to, um, put together our, whatever it is, our resulting position has, uh, is as a result of this discussion. It, it, this is Commissioner Rose again. Going back to D, um, something occurred to me and, and it's kind of related to needing clarity on, on 10.2 that we were just talking about. But in section D, when we talked about uh, the need for um, uh, commission or staff involvement, um, with respect to, um, water course one on a sort of parallel timeframe, uh, as the mitigation area, it, it occurred to me has, is it clear to the commission of what will happen to water course one during this construction process? It, it, for, for example, it is my, um, expectation that whatever water is standing in water course one before they start the work, it'll be gone the day they undertake the work. It'll drain out or be pumped out, but it won't be there. And they won't be attempting to retain it because that could ultimately result in a deluge into the construction site that would be unmanageable. So just to be clear, and, and in case this is prompting somebody to say, oh, I didn't think of that, they're gonna, they're gonna create, they're gonna dry out water course one in order to proceed with the plan as it is. And then they're going to restore that depression's air, uh, ability to hold water at the end. In the middle, it's going to be a dried out rock outcropping. And so when you, when we talk about staff or somebody providing a report on water course one during the course of construction, there's not going to be a whole lot to report on. And it made me want to say what I'm saying now unless somebody expected that something else was going to be happening up there on water course one.
Like Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So they are proposing to put a berm across wetland one so that those portion of, or water course one, so that the portion of the water course that will remain will hopefully not be impacted. Um, they have submitted documentation for the record that suggests that they can blast and not de-water that section of the wetland. I understand that the water level in that wetland fluctuates seasonally. Um, so in that sense, I think asking for reports over a period of time could help provide a better picture of, um, how that water course may or may not have been further impacted beyond what they're proposing. And I think it also provides the opportunity that, you know, should, should there have been some level of impact, um, that the commission can assess whether, what, what step would be appropriate at that time.
So this is Commissioner Rose again, so, um, it, of course, they will propose to, uh, build a berm, retain the water prior to, um, undertaking the blasting. But as a practical matter, and i- if we just, if I just think for a minute, forget what's been presented, but if I just think, if there's water standing up there 24 inches deep or so, they are not going to be able to construct an earthen berm in the middle of the puddle, which is what they're going to have to do because their plan is to remove the other half of the puddle on the outside of the berm by blasting. They're not going to be able to construct an earthen berm and blast that rock face and have whatever waters behind that berm not end up in the parking lot. So all I'm saying is that that should be expected. Staff should know that, the commission should understand that because that's likely what's going to happen. There won't be any water in water course one during construction. And they'll, the water won't come back until they finish their construction and successfully build that berm, which is intended to recreate water course one in a smaller footprint than it was originally. So I, I'm just giving that a clarity because it's just saying only what should be said, uh, that that's what's going to happen.
So this is Commissioner Boda, I want to, I want to, um, so the description that you just listed, is that something that is coming from you, from your own personal, um, belief or professional work, or is that something that we can look to either the peer reviewer or the applicant? Um, and the, the reason why I, I say that is because I think it's important that in the same way I, there's, there's things that I remember from DEP trainings, uh, and the, the legal trainings about uh, prudent and feasible alternatives, and I don't feel like I can discuss those, um, because they were not part of the public hearing. If you're, um, the, if the thoughts that you have just shared are not part of the record, then that is not something that we can take into consideration as we, um, make our determination. So would you clarify, is that something that you personally know because of your professional work, or is that something that you saw in the text of the, um, public hearing?
Uh, so it's my, it's my professional opinion. Um, this is what I do. Um, and, uh, I wasn't not trying to, um, first of all, I don't recall um, all the things that I said on this subject during the deliberations. I might very well have in one form or another said what I just said.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we talked about the possibility that fissures would occur, that they already exist, that when the face of the rock is moved back, it could come into contact with a fissure that was basically behind the current native face of rock. And the result would be that the, the water course would drain right through the fissures and be gone. And the issue then would be, well, if you just opened up a fissure that emptied it, how are you going to close the fissure to retain water in the future? We never resolved that and there was no, no information offered by the applicant to, to discuss that, but just as I'm doing now, I'm saying what in my professional opinion is likely to happen. And so it's very possible fissures will occur, it'll drain out, and then we won't even figure out how to retain it. I brought it up here only because we, we, with respect to 10.2D, with respect to section D, we were talking about the need for, um, reports and monitoring, and I, I guess that just, uh, struck me as, um, I could just see this potential, uh, reaction happening. If we didn't as a commission know that that water was likely going to have to be, uh, pumped out or removed, or might otherwise end up not staying where it is. If we don't know that going in, then we're going to expect something uh, through reports that isn't reasonable, which is really the point that I was trying to make. I, I just wanted to say in this deliberation that we should know that there's not going to be any water up there. It's not going to stay there. If it evaporates before this all starts, great. But if it doesn't, it's not going to survive construction. And only through, uh, the management, the construction management of that water, is it going to end up someplace that's not going to cause trouble. But don't think that it, reports are going to be coming back to us saying that, you know, uh, the water in water course one is, uh, safe and sound and the ducks are swimming because it won't be.
And I, uh, Commissioner Rose, you brought up 10.2D in the, you know, first two big words were irreversible and irretrievable. And I guess what you're saying is to the extent that fissures open up, um, I believe in the minutes you, you talked about when you were talking about this grouting. And my concern would be if, if there isn't a, uh, I guess, solution to fixing a fissure that occurs with blasting, um, then we do have an irretrievable loss. Um, how practical is it to be able to grout fissures that occur from blasting so that we don't have an irretrievable loss?
So, uh, this is Commissioner Boda, so before really starting to go back and forth on this topic, I, I think it's important that, um, if this was part of the public hearing, then, you know, we, we can dig into the, the testimony that was there. I think that we put ourselves on very, very shaky legal ground if we get into a conversation, um, about information that was not discussed at the public hearing, um, where the applicant and, and any public or interveners has the opportunity to have input on. So, uh, I don't know if, um, Jamie or David, if, um, you recall where any conversation like that might have been. I think on the, I think also I remember on the last night of the public hearing, but I think that if we were to talk about this from the lens of 10.2D, then we would want to look at that text from the last night of the public hearing and use that from which to have our conversation as opposed to, um, and with absolute respect, um, but to Commissioner Rose's, um, personal expertise.
So this is Commissioner Rose, um. So we, we don't have to worry about going down a slippery slope because I don't know the answer to your question, Commissioner Bassman, and I'm not sure there is one. And I do know that we did bring up, uh, in the public hearing, the the possibility that fissures could result in not only the loss of that standing water, but an inability to retain it in the future. And nothing was presented to address that, the risk that I raised that resulted from that discussion. There was no testimony offered by anybody to say that wouldn't happen or that could be corrected if it did. So I remember that quite clearly. And I didn't mean to bring that all up again today. Uh, and to that extent, I'm not saying anything new. I was really, again, it, maybe I've already gone too far, but my focus was um, being open about what we should be expecting when we're going to be monitoring and getting reports on water course one. Um, and, and that was what prompted me to, I guess, to resurrect this discussion.
Commissioner Bassman, yeah, no, I understand that Commissioner Rose and, and I was looking at the minutes from our, our uh, first deliberation meeting where this was discussed. Um, a- as a, you know, key element to that irreversible and irretrievable um, comment made in 10.2D.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um, the peer reviewer did um, ask the applicant about this ish, this possible issue. Um, and they asked what would happen if there were fissures and um, the applicant did respond to that in their comment letter. Um, and they also submitted supporting documentation from their, I might be using the wrong word, but geotechnical expert um, supporting that they believed that that would not be a problem and that they can use, you know, certain techniques when they're blasting to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, I don't recall there being any further question regarding this, whether or not that response was satisfactory or not. So I think it, there may have been the impression that they had provided a satisfactory response to that question.
This is Commissioner Rose.
Commissioner Bassman, so, so that, to the extent that it was brought up at the public hearing, we could have a discussion, et cetera, but it sounds like it's going to boil down to, um, you know, what do we think the risk is, the nature of the risk associated with blasting to create a irretrievable loss of the water course one?
Commissioner Boda, Jamie, do you, do you recall which document in the Dropbox? That would be?
Commissioner Boda, this is Commissioner Bassman, you, you mean exhibit number?
Or um, the, they, they also have kind of descriptive titles.
Right.
This is David McCarthy, Commissioner Boda, are you referring to the document that Jamie said regarding a specialty person saying that that probably wouldn't happen, something like that?
Yes, Commissioner Boda, yes.
Okay, I do recall that coming later. So if you want to kind of scroll from the bottom up of the list, um, it might be in there. Uh, I can't recall the name of the specialist, but it, it was later, not earlier.
We might try, Commissioner Bassman, we might try exhibit 49, which is BL's response to COTUSPODI subsequent review.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I believe that that's where the applicant's response was. And I believe exhibit 56 is the email correspondence supporting the statement that was made in that other exhibit.
Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, did you say 56?
Yes.
I have that exhibit, Commissioner Bassman, I have that exhibit, um, let me just read, uh, this is, let's see, from David Barstow uh, to John Schmitz. John, great news, we recently had a similar project where a deep bedrock cut was required for building construction adjacent to a wetland in the town of Wilton. Blasting will likely fracture the bedrock below the wetland. However, it is our experience that the fracture will infill with soil and the permeability of the bedrock is several orders of magnitude lower than the wetland soils. It's also important to have a strong blasting speci- blasting specification to limit vibrations and overblast of the bedrock below the wetlands. Effects of blasting can be reduced by decreasing the explosive charge per delay in a blast. delays only a few milliseconds can greatly reduce the effects of a blast and control blasts typically include multiple delays. Let us know if you have any questions. And he is the geotechnical engineer.
This is Commissioner Rose, um, for the sake of saying so, I think he was uh, discussing um, a rock face uh, adjacent to wetlands. This is a water course and in this case there are no soils. Um, and so the circumstances are a little bit different. But they had uh, good luck and uh, uh, you know, similar experience. I'm not here to, we don't have the ability to debate it because they're not here and, and I'm not going to offer, I don't have a professional opinion that would be contrary to what they're suggesting. Um, sorry that I didn't recall that they had provided a response in writing. Um, so in any event, I'm, I'm prepared to move on.
Uh, Commissioner Bassman, I, I, I think the point that Commissioner Boda raised was, you know, was it brought up in a public hearing so that we could have the deliberation? Clearly, it sounds like it, it was as part of the documentation, et cetera, so I don't think we have that as an issue. Um, and, and to the extent that it was uh, addressed by COTUSPODI and we had a response from the applicant and there wasn't any um, uh, uh, negative comments associated with that, uh, my guess is we do have to move on. Any, anybody feel differently? Okay. So have we addressed 10.2D sufficiently or not?
Yes.
That we don't think, I guess we, we'd have to come to the conclusion, I guess, for the document that we're all looking to get prepared here, that we do not foresee any irretrievable or whatever that other word is um, in 10.2D uh, impacts as a result of this application to the wetlands.
Commissioner Rose, I'm satisfied that we can move on from here.
Okay. 10.2... That was it. And, and I guess, uh, Commissioner Bassman, I guess the um, the last thing I remember uh, before we had this discussion on 10.2D was that uh, staff suggested that we be clear on 10.2B as in boy. Um, and I think that could still use a little work if we want a crisp, if we want a crisp document regarding the feasible and prudent alternative.
This is Commissioner Rose, I, I think it's only fair that, that Chairman Bassman be the one to figure this out and tell us what he thinks.
Not one to avoid the, the buck here. Um, Commissioner Bassman, let me, let me indicate that 10.2B, we feel that the applicant has demonstrated the appropriate feasible and prudent alternative uh, associated with 10.2B for this application. And put that out there for your consideration.
I, I am fine with that, Commissioner Rose.
We record smirks.
Is that a smirk? I looked like a smile. I didn't think it was a smile.
Yeah, you thought it was a smile, huh?
Yeah, smile's okay. It wasn't a smirk.
Um, so Commissioner Boda, I think I would, I would recommend putting just, just a little bit more meat on those bones in terms of um, like, why it is that this particular, um, why fill in this case is going to be um, appropriate and the role of the mitigation, um, and how this is in line with um, with our fair and uniform practices in the town. I wish I could help you, but I, I'm, I'm going to bow out of um, 10.2B on this one, and I think you know why. I hope.
I guess, uh, Commissioner Rose, again, the, the one comment I would make, and I've made this before, um, and I think the, the terminology of fill, which is coming from the statute, um, interestingly does not have a place in the context of uh, water course one. Words have meaning. Filling means something, and they're not going to be filling here. The effect of water course one is to basically remove the floor from underneath part of it. They're not going to fill it. They're not going to be um, destroying wetland soils. They're going to be removing a part of a depression in a rock face, a rock surface. And, and I, 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 so I, I, I offer that only because to constantly be using the word fill, which in this context is inaccurate as a technical matter, construction matter, um, I, I, I think has relevance.
Commissioner Bassman, Commissioner Rose, can you uh, be a little uh, more specific when you talk about a technical term?
Well, I'm Merriam-Webster dictionary, you know, definition of filling. We're not filling here. Um, that's the only context I believe, and maybe Commissioner Boda can correct me if I'm wrong. It's filling the wetlands that, uh, or water course that is discussed in the statute. And it is, that is the activity that um, I, I guess to, maybe it's easier for me to make the opposite point. There isn't a discussion in, in the statute of what to do when you're going to remove the floor underneath a water course. And, and, you know, there's three air, three ways to define a water course. Um, and in this case, the, the only thing that would define this as a water course would be the um, uh, if certain plantings exist around the perimeter of it because its intermittent nature and the lack of soils underneath it um, make it questionable. But they're not going to be filling the water course. They're not going to be, um, well, just, that's, I've said enough, they're not going to be filling the water course.
You know, regard, Commissioner Bassman.
I just, if I, if I can, for context, and this may be more educational than anything, um, the section 22A dash 36, that initial kind of preamble, right? So I'm not going to do the whole thing, but I think it'll, it'll provide a little bit of context. Says, "The inland wetlands and water courses of the state of Connecticut are indispensable and irreplaceable, but fragile natural resource with which the citizens of the state have been endowed. The wetlands and water courses are an interrelated web of natural essential to adequate water supply of surface and underground water to hydrological stability and control of flooding and erosion, to the recharging and purification of groundwater and to the existence of many forms of animal, aquatic, and plant life. Many inland wetlands and water courses have been destroyed or are in danger of destruction because of unregulated use by reason of the deposition, filling or removal of material, or the diversion or obstruction of water flow, the erection of structures and other uses, all of which have despoiled, polluted, and eliminated wetlands and water courses." And it goes on from there. So I, I think that, you know, I, my uh, go, go-to word, and I will maybe try to be more guarding with the word of fill, is really a, a catch-all for um, impact in the wetlands and our water courses. So I, I think that when we look at our regulations, um, the, the general action is fill, but the, the state's initial motivation with 22A dash 36 is really speaks to all of these actions that have um, caused damage or destruction um, and have impacted or eliminated wetlands and water courses.
Commissioner Boda, you, you mentioned precedent. Do you, do you see a distinction between uh, the fill that was generated in the application for 250 North Main in this particular application?
250 North Main, um, ask the question again, I had to get the place in my head.
Yeah, do you, do you see a, a, a difference in um, the, the application that was uh, generated for 250 North Main in terms of the, either the extent of fill or the manner of fill there as opposed to this particular application?
Hmm, it's a good question. I, I think um, I think it was really an issue of that placement, right?
Well, there, there, Commissioner Bassman, there, there were a number of fill areas on the original application. They changed their application and uh, if I'm not mistaken, eliminated one. The issue came down to, I guess, the crossing from Route One onto the property as the, you know, main one. But there were other uh, other areas affected as well. But essentially, we had, you know, fill going on in that application with then a sizable mitigation to offset that.
Mm-hmm.
And a- as I look at 1151, it's in my mind the same, but I'm open to uh, you know, a discussion about why they're different.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Commissioner Boda, I can't say that uh, at, at this time that I could really recall with any precision the kind of um, the details of that application. I don't know, kids have, having kids have made my brain a little addled.
Jamie, any, any light, Commissioner Bassman, any, any light you can shed on 250 North Main in terms of a, either the same or different than this particular application?
Um, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. Uh, I don't remember, you know, specifics in comparing numbers and, and, and um, such. And I think, well, uh, obviously it's good to consider precedents and, and being uniform in your decisions. Um, I think comparing to an application that the applicant didn't necessarily know they were being specifically compared to might be problematic, um. I, I, I do see some similarities between the two in the sense that they both are larger, there are applications that have larger wetland impacts than most applications that the commission has received.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bassman, and I'm not- Yeah, this is Commissioner Bassman, and I'm not suggesting that because we, you know, allowed it in case A, if there was a mistake, that we should continue that. And, and I certainly recognize the concern that Commissioner Boda continues to, to make here about, you know, these large applications fill considerable amount of, of wetlands. And while we have every good intention of offsetting that with appropriate mitigation, the literature is full of examples where that has failed. And, and so the comments are, are certainly to be considered. But I, I, I do think that we have had applications where we have filled wetlands offset with the appropriate mitigation. And, and, and I, and so I don't know that this, in, in my mind, that this particular application is kind of off on its own, either because of size or the amount of fill that they're looking to, to do. I think we've had other applications along those, along those same lines. Is this the remaining sticking point on this application?
Commissioner Boda, I think, I think so. And I think honestly that between you and Commissioner Rose, you could put that, like I said, the, the meat on the bones of that motion that kind of goes after 10.2B. I, I think that you are probably 85% of the way there with, with a language for some motion, for emotion rather, that gets to why in, in this, in this case, that criteria for decision is the, the appropriate course. I think you just, it's just the why, right? Like, that's the only piece that's missing, right, is why in this case is that okay? And I think that Commissioner Rose has, has spoken to that in, in general terms, and I, if it is where you want to advocate for, then I would say, Commissioner Rose, if you can succinctly say why 10.2B is satisfied, then you could build off of Chairman Basserman's initial comment, and you would have something approaching a motion.
Commissioner Bassman, just a case in, 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 in point here. Is there, do we have the ability to read back that pre-motion? Has that been captured anywhere so that, no? Am I, did he take his head, no, or what?
You're, this is Commissioner Rose. You're referring to what you, you said verbally, Peter?
Yep. Jamie, you know if we have that ability to capture that? I know we're recording it, but we don't have the, the means of, you know, like a stenographer, read that back, please.
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent. No, I mean, David's taking this right now, but I, I think that would be putting him on the spot.
Right. I agree.
This is David McCarthy. I could type fast, but not that fast, Peter.
Right. That's what I thought. Commissioner Rose, this is Commissioner Bassman. Commissioner Rose, do you recall 10 minutes ago, enough of what I said to build on it, or are we back to square one?
I, I admittedly, I could not recite what you said. I apologize. I was hanging on every word when you said it, but my memory is short. That's the problem.
All right, let me try to recreate. It, it would appear regarding 10.2B that the applicant has demonstrated appropriate feasible and prudent alternatives per 10.2B, and that the recommended solution as presented by the applicant, which was alternative, and I'll go by memory here, but I think it's three, is the, satisfies the requirement of 10.2B. Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong on that number alternative, but I'm doing that from memory.
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent, I think that the, what they ended up moving forward with was a modification of what was alternative four, which was an alternative, modification of alternative three, so final modification of alternative three slash four, I guess, would probably be.
Thank, thank you, Jamie.
This is Commissioner Rose. I, I think the way he just said that, Commissioner Boda, is to the point enough. It, it discusses the fact that there were reasonable and prudent alternatives examined. There were a number of them, and we settled on one. You know, the record behind all the alternatives and behind the one we settled on is clear. It's in the record. I don't see, think we have to recite the, you know, soundbites from the record to, to say any more than he just said. Alternative three came as a result of analysis of reasonable and prudent alternatives, and and that was the one we, we said is the one to go with. Do you agree?
Mr. Bassman, have we hit the goal line, or, or are we still, still searching for that 15%?
I think, I think we just stumbled across the gold line.
Yeah.
With the ball in the hands.
This is David McCarthy. At this moment, Peter, I just wanted to let you and as well as the commission know that Commissioner Kraus had emailed me. She, she did come into the meeting a bit later. She's the phone number on the screen. I asked her in an email while we were talking if she was able to catch up, and she has. She'll still have to state it for the record on the call here, but I just wanted to let you know that we now have another seated commissioner for this.
Commissioner Bassman, thank you, David.
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent. With that information, I just unmuted that phone line. So Sandy, hopefully you'll be able to talk now and be heard.
Okay, great.
Uh, 10.2B, going once, going twice.
Sold. Commissioner Rose.
Commissioner Sullivan, I'm satisfied.
Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Kraus, good for me.
Okay, wait, but before we do that, I think I have to ask the question, and you can respond affirmatively or negatively. Commissioner Kraus, have you been able to review the record and feel substantially equipped to be, be able to vote this evening?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. And now you may state for the record where you're at on 10.2B.
I'm in agreement with the motion you made.
Commissioner Boda.
Yes.
Oh, good. There, we can stop right there.
Uh, because Commissioner Boda, I think your motion is fine.
Where, where, where are you at?
Um.
She's smiling, not smoking.
Smiling, not smoking. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the, I, I think the application will have what it needs. I think it will, it will, it sounds like it will certainly pass. I don't think that you need my vote for it.
Okay. Our, Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, are you now sufficiently prepared to address 10.2B in the document that you're looking to prepare?
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent, I think we can. So to clarify, are you requesting a draft resolution based off of that? That statement and the supporting conversation that has occurred this evening?
Commissioner Bassman, yes.
Commissioner Boda, I, I think also the, I, I've lost it now, the document that that you drew up with the, sorry, it's gone, like the five points or nine points that were potential conditions? Yes. Nine points. It was the thinking that those be converted into conditions of approval?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent, the, the thought was that based on discussions and, and staff review, these were likely possible conditions. So I would just like to have confirmation whether all of those are conditions that you would like to see added into that resolution, and whether there'd be any modifications that you would like to those conditions.
Which exhibit number is that? This is Commissioner Kraus.
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent, it's not an exhibit. It was emailed out earlier this week. It's also available in the Dropbox, and I could also people would like.
Commissioner Bassman, but, but we, we went through these nine at kind of the beginning of this call, right? Were there any issues that we felt of those nine we would modify?
No, I just wanted to have it in front of me while we were talking about it. Sorry.
So this is Commissioner Boda, Commissioner, Chairman Bassman, my, I, I think what I was trying to get across is that in addition to the motion that was made, it would be important to add that these nine, nine items that were drafted by staff be added as conditions for approval. And I, I, I would just add that to your initial motion.
Commissioner Bassman, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Boda. I, I guess my pre-motion, whatever you want to call it, was specific to 10.2B. All right, I, I think there's other affirmatives that need to be enacted to get a complete document, such as on item D as in dog, irreversible and irretrievable, that I guess a pre-motion there would be that it would not appear that there would be irretrievable and irrevocable, whatever those words are.
Irreversible.
Loss, right, loss to the wetlands as a result of the application, of the applicant's plans. And then 10.2A, that there is no detrimental environmental impact to the wetlands or water courses as a result of the applicant's plans. And, and, and it adds, to your point of being specific on the whys and taking the words right out of 10.2 and, and making a statement regarding that, I guess, is where my head is at. I, I don't even know that that's what we've done in the past, but Jamie, you can give me some guidance there.
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent, I'm sorry, Peter, I just, I didn't quite get what you were saying.
Well, you know, the, the issue with the pre-motion that I made, I, I thought I was making specifically to 10.2B, right? As opposed to a pre-motion for the entire application. Based on Commissioner Boda's comment that, you know, we need to be clear on what we agree to and, and, and the why, so that there's a good record and document for that. So it seems to me that, that there, there would need to be some words associated with A, D, and C, I guess, or A, C, and D regarding kind of the, the, the same kind of statement, the why of the statement. That we, we, we agree that in 10.2D, for instance, that there is very little likelihood of irrevocable and irretrievable loss to the wetlands as a result of this application. Would be a pre-motion for D.
In the Lintland Agent, so you don't, it, it doesn't have to be like a formal process per se. It doesn't have to be a pre-motion, and I don't, I don't know that you have to necessarily frame it in that context for each, each point, but I think it is important that the commission has had a discussion on the record and will need essentially a finding that they are satisfied with each section. I think that's kind of been addressed for a majority of them, and I think the one that was really outstanding was section 10.2B. And then also assessing what conditions of approval might be appropriate to also attach to those considerations or based off of those considerations of those points.
Commissioner Bassman, thank you for that instructive comment, and, and I guess back to Commissioner Boda's original issue that she raised here. The nine points, to me, were pretty valid. It provided some clarity. It provided some detail that may not have been obvious in, in, unless we had these, this language added. So I, I guess to the extent that the words are important, are there any word changes, modifications, suggestions, or whatever on the document that staff sent out regarding the nine points from any of the commission members?
This is Commissioner Rose. No, I think the nine points are great and necessary, and they, they should be added as they are. However, that we're not discussing that. The, the draft general conditions document that's circulating is a separate issue from the nine items on this document, right? We're still working, are we, are we still working on the general conditions and considering that document as a a, a document that will go with this and future approvals?
Commissioner Bassman, I'm not sure I understand there. My, my thought was similar to what we did with a prior application at Sycamore Way, that if we conclude tonight these deliberations, that staff would then take the information that was discussed tonight, put that in a document that corresponds to how we voted. And for clarity purposes, et cetera, and, and completeness, we would have that document to review at some subsequent meeting, either a special meeting or the next regularly scheduled meeting.
This is Commissioner Rose. I got that, agreed with that. So I'll rephrase my question. The, the current working document we refer to as general conditions, is that a separate thing, or are we incorporating that document into this approval also?
Okay, Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, why don't you address that?
Can I ask a clarifying question? This is Commissioner Boda. Are, are you talking about the general boilerplate that was an amalgamation of?
I, I, I should say. Yes.
Okay, not, not the, not the nine points.
I'm agreeing that the nine points should be part of this approval. And I'm asking the question, where does the boilerplate document we, we've all been working on fit into all of this?
I see. Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Jamie Frederick and the Lintland Agent. So the nine points identified in the document we sent out were ones that specifically either came up or as staff felt that they were important to review and consider. There are additional conditions in the boilerplate conditions that if you want to add, you, you, you could. There are some kind of more abstract. I don't know if that's really the right word. There's that, there are other ones that could apply to the application, but I think that it's more of the commission's judgment call as to whether or not they, they want to apply them. I don't necessarily. So I, I, I don't know if you guys had the opportunity to look at those prior to this meeting and see if there were any that you were really, you thought were applicable or. were applicable, or if you want to take a look at it now, but as staff, I did, or I, I looked through those and I pulled out the ones that I thought were really relevant to this application.
So that.
Yeah, and some, some of those are clearly not relevant, right? But they was, it was not intended to be just a review of, of Branford regulation, some of these were from other towns, correct?
Yeah.
Boilerplates.
In the Wetland Agent, that's correct. And there are some that are, are, again, kind of clarifying, you know, I think there's one about porta potties and how close they can be to wetlands and stuff like that, so I didn't, I didn't identify those ones, but if, if you wanted to add them, I mean, that, that's, I feel, the commission's decision and not something that staff should be necessarily.
So, this is Commissioner Rose, I, I wasn't inviting or asking for a review of the boilerplate document, I was asking where it fit in, and you answered it, you plucked from that, and included in your nine-point document, things that are directly relevant to this project. That's the answer to the question. The boilerplate document is still a work in progress, I personally wanted to know if that was the case, that sounds like it is, that's great. And of course, that is the nature of boilerplate, doesn't always apply to everything, but, but you've answered my question, the nine-point document addresses everything that we need to address, that was intent, so thanks for answering the question.
And, and any more discussion? Commissioner Basserman, any more discussion? Then I guess we need to take this to a vote.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I just want to make sure before you go on to a vote, I, I think you can vote on having staff draft up a document for review. I think that you just want, I, I, I really think that you want to have the document prepared before you make a, a motion on the actual application. So if you want to make a motion to have staff draft up a document and then explain what that document is, I think that that's fine, but I just want to make sure that.
And Commissioner Basserman, that's consistent with what we did for Sycamore Way?
Jamie Frederick, Wetland Agent, that's correct.
Well, with that guidance, I guess, are we prepared as a, well, going to vote individually? I, I make a motion that the staff prepare a document that the commission will review at a to-be-determined date regarding application inland wetland 191101, 1151 West Main Street, for a grocery store and bank.
Oh, second, Commissioner Boda, I'll second, I'll second it for you.
Okay, all in favor?
Did you start it?
I did.
Yes, he started it. Any further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any? So what is that vote now? We got one, two, three, four, is that five zip? Sandy, did you vote?
I, I voted yes.
Okay.
Chairman Basserman?
Yes, David.
What really helped last time was when you just went right down the docket, so I could make sure I grab everybody.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, roll call. Let's see, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Boda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Kraus?
Aye.
Commissioner Basserman votes a aye. All right, five zip. Now, to determine, I guess, a meeting date, we have the opportunity to do that, I guess, either at a special meeting or at a regular meeting, am I correct on that, Jamie?
Yes, but we would, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, there would need to be an extension, because the extension was currently granted until this special meeting.
Commissioner Basserman, that would be in either case, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, John Nuff, I'm not on video, but I'm on audio, I'd be happy to grant the commission whatever extension it needs until it next, it next decides to meet.
Thank you, John Nuff. Question, Jamie, do we have a full agenda for May?
Um, there have been a couple of applications for receipt, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. It's kind of hard to, to, I guess, categorize full, especially in the late context.
Commissioner Boda, if I can, I, I would, I would advocate for it being part of our regular, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Y'all are awesome, love you, but I, like, you know, these, I think we can, we have already kind of figured out the, it's, it's really going to be a question of voting on the motion that's drafted, and I am zoomed out, I got to tell you.
That, that works for me. Anybody else feel differently? Okay. So the next regularly scheduled meeting is May, what?
I think 14th.
May 14th.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraus and Jamie. Do we want to do that at six o'clock or seven?
Commissioner Boda, I, I, I vote for seven, six is early when trying to navigate dinners.
Yeah, I, I.
Commissioner Kraus, I vote for seven as well.
Commissioner Sullivan, seven.
Sounds like a majority, seven o'clock on May 14th, was that the date?
May 14th.
Yes.
Okay.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, just two points real quick. One, John Nuff, can you just confirm that continuing to the May 14th meeting is acceptable to the applicant, and that you can follow up with an email to our office?
It is, it is acceptable, and I will follow up with an email tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, the motion to have staff draft a document didn't really include the context of what it would be, so I just want to really quick state that my understanding is that that's going to be based off of deliberations, obviously, and the, what we'll kind of call the pre-motion that Peter made regarding 10.2B and the conditions of approval as outlined in the guidance document that was emailed out earlier this week with the nine points. Can I just get a general consensus of whether that's accurate?
Commissioner Basserman.
This is Commissioner Kraus, that was my understanding.
You get nods of heads and thumbs up and all that kind of stuff, so.
Commissioner Boda, Jamie, will you, and you, will you send that copy of the text out before the email so we can read it?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, we can, we can do that, yes, and hopefully it'll be a little bit earlier, given the fact that we have a little bit more time, so you have more time to look at it yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's attendance and participation, and as Commissioner Boda said, you know, we're, we seem to be doing a lot of that these days, and hopefully at some point in the not-too-distant future, we'll be able to sit as a group as opposed to looking at a screen. Is there a motion to leave us?
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Rose.
Commissioner Kraus, second it.
Everybody on board, thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Good night. Good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.